All right, next following this meeting, we're in the City Council order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Ms. Floyd, here. Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
President.
Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Riletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bob?
Here.
And Mr. Cos.
Here.
We have all President, and we're here this evening. If you please rise and join Mr. Johnson on his invitation.
Follow my pledge of allegiance.
May we take a few minutes for our own personal thoughts, and then I will pray. Lord, we come to you tonight in this season of joy and giving. We are aware of those who find the season not full of joy, and we ask you to bless them. As we look to the new year, be with us in our deliberations. May we make decisions not for ourselves but for our city. Bless those in joy and those in need, and we pray to know your will. We ask your blessing on our city, our county, our state, and our nation, and we pray for the peace in the world that was promised in the Scriptures. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Guthrie, you want to do the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Guthrie. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may pertain to the agenda this evening. Do we have any?
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie?
[laughing]. Miss President, I would like to bring forth Rule 14A, which was approved by the Rules Committee last Monday, and make a motion for its adoption. And I believe it's in the right bill. Is that right?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guthrie, second by Mrs. Floyd. Autumn, you want to go ahead and read the rule?
Sure. Rule 14A: All members of council have a responsibility to be cognit-- cognizant of existing Ohio public ethics laws. If at any time a member of council has a question or concern regarding his or her action and how such action may be impacted by Ohio public ethics laws and their sworn oath of office, such member should promptly seek good guidance from the Ohio Ethics Commission, including a written opinion regarding the proper legal and ethical course of conduct for such council member. Compliance with Ohio's public ethics laws is the personal responsibility of each council member, and violations thereof are the personal responsibility of the council member. Violations of Ohio's public ethics laws may result in legal action against such council member in his or her individual capacity as well as such action-- or, excuse me, as action against such council member by council pursuant to Charter Article 3.07 and 16.04. Council members should be aware that the decisions regarding compliance with the Ohio public ethics laws are personal in nature, and reliance on guidance from anyone other than personal legal counsel or the written opinions of the Ohio Ethics Commission may not provide a defense to allegations of ethical misconduct.
Good job. We have a discussion on Rule 14 dash X. Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Rule 14A will be added to our rules. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, for bringing that up. Anything else on caucus this evening? Next, we have the minutes of our December 7, 2015, council meetings. Is there a motion to adopt this?
So.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Raff. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. That passes. Thank you. We have one appointment this evening by Mayor Hall, reappointing Mark Monder to the Licken County Tax and Senate Review Council. The term begins January 1, 2016, and will expire December 31, 2017. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Thank you. That also passes. We have six reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, one from capital improvements, one from rules, one from ways and means, and one from economic development. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports this evening from city officials, one from Stephen Johnson, our auditor. Notification at the city auditor's office received a certification of achievement for excellence in financing-- financial reporting. How many is that, Mr. Johnson?
Twenty-four.
Okay. Twenty-four. Wow. And the other from Barb Jones, our city tax administrator, Newark City Income Tax Revenue Report for the period ending November 30, 2015. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have two, one from Paul Moran, his comments and concerns from the December 7 council meeting, and one from Roger Loomis, our utility superintendent. Water bill liens being sent to the county in an amount of $9,184.89 for past due bills. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. We have a public hearing this evening. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Autumn, would you please read ordinance number 15 dash 27?
Ordinance number 15 dash 27 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance amending Article 135, display signs and outdoor advertising of the zoning code of the city of Newark, Ohio, adopted May 5, 2009 by ordinance 08 dash 33A.
Is there any comments, pro or con, to this public hearing? Any comments, pro or con? Before we close the public hearing, I would like to state that the Planning Commission did reject this. They-- I believe Mr. Rhodes said they were planning on reviewing completely our whole signed ordinance, and would like to do that in early 2016, so they actually rejected this. So if we're going to pass this, it will take seven votes to pass it, since the Planning Commission did not pass it. One more time, anyone pro or con on this to speak this evening? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Autumn, you want to read ordinance 15-27 for the second reading?
Ordinance number 15 dash 27 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance amending Article 135, display signs and outdoor advertising of the zoning code of the city of Newark, Ohio, adopted May 5, 2009 by ordinance 08 dash 33A.
You've heard your second reading of 15 dash 27. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cos?
Make a motion to adopt 15-27.
Motion by Mr. Cos, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guthrie. Any discussion on 15 dash 27?
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie?
I was telling the service director earlier that in all the years I've been in public service, I don't believe I've ever proposed something I voted against. But tonight, I'm doing that with ordinance 15 dash 27, and I'm doing that not really because of the Planning Commission's recommendation, but because the administration has made a commitment, and I take them at their word, to work on this problem, and I'm grateful for that, and for that reason, I'll be voting aye.
Mr. Guthrie? Anyone else? Mr. Cos?
I'm in a similar situation as Mr. Guthrie on this. There are some inconsistencies that I think need some work, and I think it can be a much better piece of legislation with a little additional effort. Thank you, Mr. Cos.
Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
No.
Mr. Riletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Bob?
No.
And Mr. Cos?
No.
15 dash 27 is defeated. And again, Mr. Rhodes said he would bring you something here for this evening in 2016. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a discussion with council. This is just your opportunity to come up and give us a comment if you'd like.
My name's Wim, what's your 263 Union Street? There's one comment I got tonight. I'd like to see my street, Union Street, paved for next summer, 2016, during the summer. And I'd like to know when they're going to fix Charles Alley and redo the alley, because the alley behind me is full of potholes. A lot of people come to me asking what they're going to do about it, and I tell them that they're going to take one street at a time. I'm pretty sure the city will get to it. And I'd like to know when the new Charles Valley Road is going to be open. And I just wanted to see if the Flint Festival came back. You're a kid on that? You're in the hot seat.
Yes, you are. We'll get a fast one.
Go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
The 12% forecast should be mostly sunny tomorrow, high only, mid-60, but we are reaching that point near 60 by Wednesday, by Tuesday and Wednesday, possibly Thursday for Christmas Eve. I'll get your 7-day 12% weather forecast.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. So no white Christmas, I take it?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Mr. Moore? Could you just give us your name and address to the record, please?
Dave Morris, and I'm not here for annexation, Mr. Mayor, but I live in Newark Township, 363 Queens Drive North, and that's in Newark. As I look around this-- I haven't been in this chamber for a long time. I'm very fond of this chamber. As I sat where Mr. Cos is sitting now, Mr. Resta sat next to me, and I think I probably had as good a time in that period of time as I've ever had in my life. As I look around this room, and as I think of the county commissioner's office, as I think of the state legislature, there had been very few Ohioans who have dedicated 40 years of their life to public service. Mark Guthrie is just ending a 40-year career, and I personally, Mark, want to thank you, and I suggest we give a standing ovation.
Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay, we'll move on to legislation. Ordinance is on the second reading, 15 dash 31.
Ordinance 15 dash 31A by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, Mr. Guthrie, and ordinance creating Chapter 218 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio, regarding mandatory ethics training for certain elected and appointed officials.
You've heard the second reading of 15 dash 31. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr.-- Ms. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt--
Motion by--
15 dash 31A.
I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15 dash 31A? Sorry, missed the A. Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes.
15 dash 31A passes 10-0. Mr. Morris, I forgot to say, Mr. Cos is also having a good-- one of the best times he's had also, sitting up here. Didn't want to forget that. Next, we have 15 dash 32.
Ordinance 15 dash 32 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending the pay range and department authorization tables of the Department of Economic and Community Development for the position of grant writer, residential program supervisor, economic development coordinator, and the office manager slash account clerk, and setting compensation therefore. The positions of assistant director slash planner, two building inspectors, building inspector slash lead risk assessor, two office assistant slash account clerks, code enforcer will be abolished.
You've heard the second reading of 15 dash 32. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd?
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Do we have any discussion on 15 dash 32?
I'd just like to say, this department is one of the hardest-working departments. I mean, everybody in the city works hard, but this department works extremely hard with very few people, and I think it's very important to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes.
15 dash 32 passes 9 to 1. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 15 dash 33.
Ordinance 15 dash 33 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance to make appropriations for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2016, and this is for the grant funds.
15 dash 33? Mr. President. Mr. Blake?
Move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
We need to pass this and the next two pieces of legislation to fund government starting January 1.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Autumn, please call the roll, away the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt ordinance 15-33.
Motion by Mr. Blake?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on your ordinance 15 dash 33? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. 15 dash 33 passes 9 to 1. Next, we have 15 dash 34, also on the first reading.
Ordinance 15 dash 34 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance to make appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2016, all of their funds.
Again, this is the first reading. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt-- or, I'm sorry, this is for fund government starting January 1.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Got outstep.
Autumn, please. Please call the roll, away the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt ordinance 15-34.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. 15 dash 34 passes 9 to 1. I know this is a little bit mundane, but this is just kind of some year-end stuff we've got to get done, so bear with us if you would. Next, we have 15 dash 35.
Ordinance 15 dash 35 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2016, general fund budget.
15 dash 35 is also on the first reading. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
We need to fund government starting January 1.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Autumn, please call the roll, away the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt ordinance 15-35.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion on this one?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I do want to make a few comments while we-- at this point. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor and to the auditor's office. I think this year was probably the first time in many of our memories where members of council got the legislation and detailed information a week prior to committees. Usually, we only have like a weekend to review things, but I think that extra week provided time for the administration to reach out to members of council and to some communication to occur, and so I thought that was very helpful and very, very much appreciated. I don't see Lori in the audience, but I wanted to say publicly thank her for not only providing working-- her work on the budget, but also the request to compare it to the previous budget and the detailed extra information. So Steve, you could pass that on to Lori. That's, publicly, thank you very much for that additional information. I ran into a citizen at a bookstore recently, and the budget is a bunch of numbers, and so trying to understand those numbers is critical to all of us sitting up on this dais, and so her explanations were very helpful, so that's always needed. And then with that, I'll pass Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else in this discussion? Autumn, please call the roll vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. 15 dash 35 passes 9 to 1. Next on the first reading, we have 15 dash 36.
Ordinance 15 dash 36 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance temporarily amending Section 890.13 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, providing for the allocation of income tax revenues.
15 dash 36 is on the first reading. Ms. Hall?
Move to waive the two-day rule.
Ms. Hall, ask to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Ms. Hall?
It has to be done by the first.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Autumn, please call the roll, away the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. Two-day reading rule has been waived. Ms. Hall?
Mr. President, move to adopt 15-36.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall, and second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15 dash 36? Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since last week's meeting, I've had numerous constituents, and not just in my ward, talk to me about this. I had two of them actually email. They have great concern about our roads, and the biggest thing they kept telling me was it shouldn't be an either-or when it comes to safety forces and our streets, and that they're paying tax dollars, and their expectation is that their streets get taken care of. And this really sets us back, cutting the capital improvements budget so dramatically. Even with the 90s split last year, we had two premium holidays to kind of offset that. And I think it's only the beginning that we're going to hear about concerns. I mean, William has come up here how many times and commented on the condition of his street. Those of us that are, you know, some of our own streets aren't in the best of shape, and so I hope that we come up with some kind of solutions to help fund capital improvements and get more money in there for 2016, because I think that our streets are going to greatly deteriorate if that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I, I just want to say that, um, who's it, twenty-fourteen, just a year ago, you know, uh, several members of this council and working with the mayor had proposed to the citizenry, uh, some additional revenues for streets. And so if that option comes around again, then I think we really need to get a coordinated effort to, uh, tell the story to the citizens about this need. And so I would, uh, I would just echo that, you know, whatever campaign comes up in the future for additional revenues, uh, for this specific purpose, that we should all get on board with that and, uh, look, uh, looking towards citizens to help us with that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else? Honored, please call the roll to vote on fifteen dash thirty-six.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash thirty-six passes nine, one. Next on the first reading, we have fifteen dash thirty-seven.
Ordinance fifteen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. This is an ordinance declaring to be a public-purpose certain improvements to parcels of real property in the City of Newark which are necessary for the further development of the River Trail project, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to directly benefit the respective parcels and declaring an emergency.
Fifteen dash thirty-seven is on its first reading, but it is an emergency, so it only has one reading. What does your wish?
Mr. Raff?
Mr. Koss?
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to adopt.
Mr. Raff, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Here we have declared emergency on this to beat budgetary and calendar restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anything else? Honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash thirty-seven passes ten zero. Resolutions on the second reading now, fifteen dash one oh three.
Resolution fifteen dash one oh three by Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute a contract for reimbursement of legal representation of individual persons for calendar year two thousand and sixteen by the Licking County Board of Commissioners for the City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of fifteen dash oh three. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Koss?
I can make a motion to adopt fifteen dash one oh three. Motion by Mr. Koss?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion about fifteen dash one oh three? Seeing none, honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one oh three passes ten zero. Next, we have fifteen dash one oh four.
Resolution fifteen dash one oh four by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution establishing the base rate for the stormwater utility service charge as authorized by codified ordinance of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of fifteen dash one oh four. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Koss?
I can make a motion to adopt fifteen dash one oh four. Motion by Mr. Koss?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Any discussion on fifteen dash one oh four? Seeing none, honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one oh four passes nine to one. Next, we have fifteen dash one oh six.
Resolution fifteen dash one oh six by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Disappropriating. You've heard the second reading of fifteen dash one oh six. What does your wish?
Uh, Mr. President, motion to adopt fifteen one oh six.
Motion adopted by Ms. Hall, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash one oh six? Seeing none, honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one oh six passes ten zero. They're getting there. Next, resolutions on the first reading, fifteen dash one oh eight.
Resolution fifteen dash one oh eight. A resolu- resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to make application to and enter into agreements with the Muscaton Watershed Conservancy District for financial assistance for the log pond run diversion channel restoration project, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the same and declaring an emergency.
Fifteen dash one oh eight is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, so it gets one reading. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Koss?
I can make a motion to adopt fifteen dash one oh eight. Motion by Mr. Koss?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash one oh eight? Mr. Koss, it's just we have a deadline. Anyone else? Honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one oh eight passes ten zero. Next, on the first reading, we have fifteen dash one oh nine.
Resolution fifteen dash one oh nine by Mr. Blake, Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution temporarily amending the distribution and use of net emergency medical transport revenue.
Fifteen dash one oh nine is on the first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
I can make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion, motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Bub? Second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Bub?
Yes, this is just a key component to make certain our budget is able to be balanced.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Honored, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Bub?
Motion to adopt fifteen dash one oh nine.
Motion to adopt fifteen dash oh nine by Mr. Bub, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on fifteen dash one oh nine?
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just, uh, wanted to say that I am, uh, grateful, um, that the administration, um, is willing to sunset this, um, uh, a year from, uh, uh, next week, and, uh, so that the new council can take it up again next year and discuss the merits further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
No.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one oh nine passes eight to two. Next, we have fifteen dash one ten.
Resolution fifteen dash one ten by Mr. Blake, Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Fifteen dash one ten, Mr. Blake?
Move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, this is, this resolution contains several sections that will clean up books for the end of your business.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Honored, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt fifteen one ten.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on fifteen dash one ten? Honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one ten passes ten zero. Next, on the first reading, we have fifteen dash one eleven.
Resolution fifteen dash one eleven by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the City of Newark, Ohio for two thousand and sixteen.
Fifteen dash one eleven will be held, uh, until our first meeting in January, January fourth. Next, we have fifteen dash one twelve.
Resolution dash fifteen one twelve by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for the off-site disposal of volume sludge from Lagoon Number Three at North Water Treatment Plant.
Fifteen dash one twelve will also be held for a second reading. Next, we have fifteen dash one one three.
Resolution fifteen dash one one three by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel number zero five dash two four five three five eight dash zero zero point zero zero zero, Newark, Licking County, for maintaining and improving Twenty-First and Church Streets within the City of Newark, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
Fifteen dash one thirteen is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Koss? I can make a motion to adopt fifteen dash one one three.
Motion by Mr. Koss?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion on fifteen dash one one three? Seeing none, honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yep. Fifteen dash one thirteen passes ten zero. And finally, we have fifteen dash one fourteen.
Resolution fifteen dash one fourteen by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel number zero five four dash two three three five eight zero dash zero zero point zero zero zero, Newark, Licking County, for maintaining and improving Twenty-First and Church Streets within the City of Newark, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
Fifteen dash one fourteen is also on its first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Koss?
I can make a motion to adopt fifteen dash one one four. Motion by Mr. Koss?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Do we have any discussion on fifteen dash one fourteen? Seeing none, honored, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Koss?
Yes. Fifteen dash one fourteen passes ten zero. And that concludes our very short section of legislation. Thank you very much for your attention tonight. I know that was cumbersome. Next on the agenda this evening, we have our second section of comments from citizens. The same rules apply. Please raise your hand. Let me know you want to speak or just come on up.
My name is Will Butcher, two sixty-three Union Street. I just want, I would just want to thank Newark City Council for passing, uh, this, uh, this, uh, this, uh, measure tonight, and I've been looking forward, I've been looking forward, and so I've been, I did see my bear squirrel, whole world's bushy. He'll be glad that you guys passed it. And Jeremy, I still like to have a traffic light in my apartment. And let me just, Mr. Guthrie, let me just say, it may have been me go back a long ways, you know, you've been president of Newark City Council, and if you do leave, I will miss you, and if I don't see you, have a merry, merry Christmas, and I would just say, I know you guys are part of the Newark City Council family. Just want to say, send a orange, have a merry, merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Anyone else for this final section of citizens' comments? Mr. Walter? Anyone else?
Tim Walden, one sixty-seven South Sixth Street. I'm not here to complain today, but I'm going to come back next year.
Can you say that again?
Mark, Mark, you've eaten dinosaurs up here. You've been up here almost, almost as long as I have, thirty-eight years. You've been off and on, but we're all dinosaurs. Back when we used to be a fight in his place and not being stifled for somebody people up here, the new people want to stifle, you got beating and stuff. We used to have some fun up here with us and Mark Guthrie, I mean, uh, Lehman, I mean, shoot, I can't, I had two fills today. You know, this is hard for me to say, but you know, we fought a lot. We, over the years, but we got stuff done. We got street paves back in the time. We got alleys paves. Remember the time we had that grant back then? We got all the alley paves. But now we can't get pothole paved, but we get, you know, the things downtown. I'm not naming by name, but, you know, people complain. I will come up here over the years. This is one dinosaur that they can't die out by, uh, just by leaving. I'll be up here. I know you'll probably come up, so farewell. Have a good time in your retirement. I know I hate my retirement. I wish I could go back to work, but I'll, I'll be up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Mr. Fraser, Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Moran. Mark Fraser, twenty West North Street, Newark, Ohio. I want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and President Council, members of council, and the citizens of Newark for giving me the opportunity to represent, um, the city in the next coming four years. Mr. Guthrie, um, you've had a great tenure, and you have a lot to look back on and reflect, and I know that you have a lot of priorities ahead of you in the next couple of years, and a lot of hard work, and I wish you the best in, in your endeavors, and, um, pray for your granddaughter, and, and I hope, I hope the best for her and for your family. And with that being said, I, I look forward to the opportunity, um, of this council to improve the state of Newark, to work with the administration to move the city forward, and I appreciate all your support, um, and I know that you guys are, are the tenured people here, and I look forward to taking a lot of lessons from you and, um, adding input, um, where required, and look forward to the administration over the next four years as well, and I, I really hope that we can see a better Newark after our time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Crawford?
Daniel Crawford, one sixty-three South Second Street. About ten years ago, my, uh, family, we had caught word that my mom had, her doctor had told her she had a year left to live, and I was twenty years old at the time. My brother was only thirteen, and I have, uh, two other siblings who were nineteen and eighteen respectively. So I, in a panic, I didn't know what to do. I knew I had an interest in politics, so my first inclination was to reach out to every elected official that I could who represented me. And I typed up, uh, email, you know, through tears, you know, worried about, you know, losing my mom. And, uh, the first person to respond to me, and the only person to arrange that meeting, was Mr. Guthrie. And, you know, I always, like I said before, was interested in politics, but when I met with Mr. Guthrie and he showed his sincere compassion and, you know, his concern for what I was going through, I learned at that moment what a public servant should be. So with that, thank you, Mark, for everything you've done for me, you know, for my family, and for the citizens you've represented over these last forty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Moran, we have anyone else after Mr. Moran?
Paul Moran, sixty-three North Fourth Street. Public servants. Public servants should be caring, concerned, and considerate, dedicated to citizens, helping to better a community, taking on positive projects and not personal ones. Work for the public and not the public work for them. That's my thoughts on people who are in public office at all levels, city, state, and federal. That applies to everybody. Uh, next, I want to urge bicyclists to avoid traffic whenever and wherever possible. Newark is sadly a part of the tragic death scene this year. We're joining Granville, Plumbus, and other communities where bicyclists are being killed, sort of on a regular basis or monthly basis. So you need to work on, try and, uh, change that, turn it around or something. I do wish Mark Guthrie the best. His retirement council, what a career, leading state government, local government. I know this, the Caris Cause Project means a lot to him. I was a part of it when they had the, uh, big fundraiser out in Heath, that raised the walk. I mean, there was, I don't know how many people, there was hundreds, maybe thousands, I'm not sure how many showed up, but that was really a humongous turnout in support of such an important cause, child, child cancer. And I'd like to note that, um, the nor, the, uh, north and downtown fire stations are running new medic vehicles. I noticed that on the streets here last month or two. It used to be a news item when you got a new vehicle in the city or county. It was a big news item because it showed the taxpayers how their money was being spent. I mean, yeah, it might have been a fire truck or a emergency squad and a picture right in the paper, might, you know, a lot of people might have dismissed it, but it showed where the taxpayer's money was being spent, and that's not done anymore in the paper. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Ray Goff?
Thank you. David McAlfrish, one fifty-three North Thirty-Ninth Street, Newark, Ohio. Didn't plan on speaking, but I'd be remiss if I didn't get up here and, uh, thank Mr. Guthrie for his service. Uh, he's been a tireless advocate for employees throughout his career, going back to the eighties, when he fought for public employees to have collective bargaining rights. Uh, he's continued that through his career, knowing that the employees are an important part of what makes government work. Uh, we wouldn't have roads, safety, or anything if, uh, the, the citizens and the employees weren't part of that, and he's always made sure, he watched out for everybody. So, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the administration this evening? Our award-winning honor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Clemson supporter, and, uh, we'll all hear after Mr. Stassen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, once upon a time, um, we had, uh, leadership on this council that would fine a certain member of this council a dollar every time he would, uh, mention his time as a county commissioner, or a Heath City Council member, or a Heath City Council member, or a member of the General Assembly. Now, I'm just kind of curious to know what we're going to do with all that money. Because I'm looking forward to that, because if my memory serves me right, that's a pretty large sum of money.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. I'll be looking forward to that memo, Mr. President.
Mark, I have to say, I will miss you up here. It'd be weird not having you involved in politics, but somehow, I think we'll probably see you around for a little bit to come, so with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Stassen. Mayor Hall.
And as so, I also, Councilman Guthrie, I want to wish you the best in retirement, and that's a big word for you. Thanks for all your years of service in the public sector, and certainly the number of years for the city of Newark here. It's been a pleasure working with you, so I wish you the best. And I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we move into 2016.
I pass. Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Floyd.
First of all, I know for most of us, next year's going to be tough just financially, just because of the situation that we're in. But I've learned that as you get older, you learn that this too shall pass, and things will get better down the road, and things will get better. I think we've seen a lot of changes in this community. We've got a lot of growing pains before we get done. I'm hoping in two years that, you know, all of downtown's done, and Hudson and Mount Vernon are done, and the new bridge is done. I think we'll be looking forward to a whole new city of Newark, which I think is wonderful. And I'd like to thank all the employees in Newark, and the administration, and the members of council who have worked tirelessly to make sure that these things get accomplished. For Mark, I first met Mark, and we've talked about it this last week, when he was in high school, and I was in the League of Women Voters, and we took a trip to New York City. I was a chaperone, and he was one of a group of students from Heath. There were students from Newark and Utica, and I don't know where else. And we went to New York City to observe the United Nations in action. But while we were there, we got to see hair, and we got to do all these other things. You know, we went to Greenwich Village, and we went to the top of the Empire State Building, and all those kinds of things. But that was the first time that I had met Mark. He wasn't in my group, so I didn't get to know him real closely at that point, but over the years, I've gotten to know and respect him as a great public servant who has done a lot. As a teacher, obviously, collective bargaining was very important to me, and his work in the state legislature to get collective bargaining legislation was extremely important. And I know everybody in this room doesn't agree with Mark all the time. I don't think any of us agree with all of us at it all the time. I mean, we all have our own ways of looking at things and seeing things, but Mark has always cared about the people of, whether it was the city, or the county, or the state. He's always cared about the people, and he's shown that through the work that he's done, and through the things that he's done. And for that, thank you, Mark. And Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Ms. Hall.
I would also like to thank Mark for your support for the last couple of years. And I wish you and your family a wonderful holiday. And I wish everybody here a safe holiday as well. And with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson.
Well, I guess I can echo the thoughts, and I want to comment about the wonderful opening of the fire station last week, which was very nice, and good crowd, and a beautiful day. Thank you, Mayor, for having a nice day for it. Because when we broke ground, I remember it was a little damp. But, and Mark, wish you well in your retirement, and I too thank you for your service. I know that we probably wouldn't have agreed on a lot of things, but still, that's the beautiful thing about the country we live in, that we have that opportunity to agree, to disagree, and to disagree. And there are not a lot of countries in the world that have that opportunity. So I think we're very grateful, and we're lucky to have this kind of a nation. Good luck to you. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I said no, probably more than I have my entire time on council. They're all, every single no that I voted, that I cast this evening was related to each other. It started out by, you know, I can't support pay raises with our current financial situation, and so I did not support the changing of the pay ranges. I also, you know, of course, did not support the budget the way that it is. I just feel that we really owe it to our citizens as far as making sure that our infrastructure is solid. I don't disagree with the mayor when he says that, you know, safety forces are our number one priority. That's always been my number one priority also. You know, we changed two pieces of legislation that previous councils passed in order to try to secure the financial stability of the city, and now we're messing with that again. And I just, I can understand an exception to the rule, but now, two years in a row, I think the rule is, or the exception now is the rule. And so I hope that we find some creative ways to make sure that, you know, we can actually operate within our budget in the way that we set aside money for capital improvements to make sure that our streets are improving just at the same time that our safety forces are strong. Then also, I of course can't, I can't support an increase in the stormwater utility at this point. I mean, here we are, we're talking about increasing that, we're going to hard billing possibly on the EMS, and then we're also going to turn around and, you know, if what Jeremy is saying is true, then, you know, the request for increasing taxes is just around the corner. I just can't see making it more difficult for our citizens to live in the city of Newark, and for it to cost more with everything else that's going on. I just could not support that at this point. I think that we need to make sure that we're doing things in a conservative fashion to make sure that the tax dollars that are already allocated, that they are being spent wisely, and that they're prioritized in a manner in which they should. So just wanted to explain kind of why I went on my no tangent this evening. Finally, I want to wish Mark the best in his future. I'm reluctant to use the word retirement, because I know Mark, that just isn't in his vocabulary. He's going to sit back and say, "How did I work?" I just know, he's going to be involved in things, and that's just the type of person that he is. And I'm positive that our paths will cross again, and because I just know that he just gets involved. And he likes to make sure that things that are a worthy cause are recognized, and I really do appreciate everything that he's done and his time to make sure that, you know, whatever the cause, he was 100% all in. And again, you know, people, like Curtis mentioned, that, you know, we always don't agree, but that's, that's fine. That's why we want to debate. We want to make sure that we've looked at every single angle. And at the end of the day, whether, you know, I vote no, or he votes no on something, it's not, it's not personal. It's just something that we have our beliefs, and I'm glad that there are people in this country that have strong beliefs, and that they stand by them, and Mark has always done that. And I always try to do that, too. So you can almost say that Mark and I are like, "Man, we'll be after it." But I do wish him well, he and his family. And I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Raff.
Thank you. I'll start out with, you know, I hear a lot of people talk about the downtown, and put in all the money and effort and time and everything into the downtown, and I have always been all for that, a great supporter of that. But I'm also a great supporter and all for the rest of the city as well. And today, we passed 1537, 15104, 15113, 15114, all ordinances that are going to affect a very positive improvement to areas of 21st Street, and Church Street, and 30th Street, Buckeye Avenue, and River Road, on areas outside of the downtown area. Unfortunately, it's not one spot, and it's not one grandiose effort, so a lot of people don't see it or recognize it, but there are going to be some significant improvements, and I'm very happy about that. And I guess, Mr. Guthrie, you know, we haven't agreed on much, but somebody once said that if we all agreed all the time, nine of us wouldn't be necessary, so I want to thank you for making me necessary. Seriously, 40 years of service, public service is commendable and respectable, and I appreciate your service and your willingness to do that. Thank you. I guess I'll end with saying Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and I'll pass with that.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Alata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like everyone else, I'd like to thank Mr. Guthrie for his years of service, and Mark, you know, I truly believe that because of the work you've done as councilman, and county commissioner, and state representative, our community is a better place to live in. And I think your compassion for our community should really inspire all of us to be the best elected officials we can be, so I want to thank you. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Alata. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say, first, a few thank yous. I don't see the fire chief here, but I want to thank the mayor and the fire chief. We took the youth council to the new firehouse last week, and I thought the teenagers, the leaders enjoyed that, and so the youth council is really coming along well this year, I think, with visiting different city facilities and learning about the executive branch. But next month, we're going to go visit the judiciary, taking the youth council to go see Judge Stansbury, and so I think they're doing a good job about learning different local government aspects, and so I thank the mayor for his partnership on that, and for the different administrators that have hosted the youth council at their facilities. And I think something that, you know, when we talk about the youth council, or we talk about any, any type of our citizenry, it brings up constituent services. And if anything about Mr. Guthrie is that what I've learned, what my takeaway would be, is to, when someone calls or emails, is to follow up, and to, you know, to take that person, they've taken the time out of their busy day, whatever concern they might have, they've reached out to their elected official. And so, you know, Mark, I've seen you work with different constituents over the years, and, you know, that would be my takeaway from observing you, and from seeing you as a mentor, is that constituent service above all else is very important. I mean, just even giving that person the opportunity to vent for, you know, however long they need to vent, you know. We're here to take that role, take that responsibility. It's a part of our elected duties, and so I've learned that from you. When I was a staffer in the state house, now I won't be the next one that starts building up on resume things, but when I was a staffer in the state senate, I do, I remember fondly the stories from people that have been there longer than I of the 80s, from when Gene Branston, Mark Guthrie, and the whole collective bargaining process was going through the General Assembly. And so even when you came back to visit for various reasons, people do who, where you were because of your leadership, did not want that issue another thing, so just, you know, just being a servant leader, being a humble leader, being a leader that has great experience and shares those experiences, you know, I thank you for that. And I know your passion, your love for public service. You know, just trying to make improvements and make tomorrow better for all of us, and so I, you know, thank you for that, Mark. I know that your next passion, your next chapter is going to be Caris' Cause, and is going to be not only just for the benefit of your grandbaby, but for many other children in our community, in our state. The Advocate wrote a few articles about Caris, and I went ahead and talked to some of our friends over at The Advocate, and all of them, if you wouldn't mind giving Mr. Guthrie a gift that I put down there. I had him frame a few of the articles that appeared in the paper, and I thought you might like those, depending on your wall. And so there's one article with Caris on the front page, which I thought you might like to have had. And then there was another article where that painting with Grandpa, the Grandpa painting was there, so I thought you might like to have those, so thank you for, thank you for that. Merry Christmas, everybody, and Mark, again, thank you so much for your years of service. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Self-interfitted, Mr. Bub.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Mark, best wishes, good health, and the future. Certainly wish you the best. So like to welcome the councilman, Mark Fraser, to be joining us beginning of the year. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Ms. Scott.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Steve Johnson and his staff for the awards they received. That's pretty incredible. Thank you so much for everything that you do. Mark, you've been, you've been an amazing public servant. I want to thank you very much for that. After 41 years of service, I still have to tell you that what I admire you most for is for what you're doing with Caris' Cause. That's amazing, and that really hits home for a lot of us. Earlier in this campaign, we had a meeting, and a dispatch came over and did a story about the meeting that we'd had. And when they wrote the article, I wasn't sure I was at the same meeting they were at, but they referred to Mr. Bub as a Democrat, and they referred to me as a Republican, and they referred to Mark as being 41-years-old. Needless to say, Mark was the only one that was happy about that article.
Thank you so much for everything, and Merry Christmas. Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things, if I could. First, Carol, I didn't tell you this when we talked about the United Nations tour, but some of us male students did some things on that trip that probably slipped by. Thank goodness for us Catholics, we have confession. Someone made reference to being humble, and I wanted to tell you, since this is my last opportunity to talk about my past, about an experience. When I was a young county commissioner, I was, I was, I was probably sort of a pain in the neck because I was in the office all the time, and so I was, I was taking a very high percent of the complaints. Ryan, your dad can relate to this, I'm sure. And one particular morning, one of the secretaries was off, and I was just picking the phone up, and I had three really difficult calls. You know, dogs in sheep, just ditch problems, it was just, it was not going well at all. And about the fourth call was a woman who said to me, "Mr., I will speak to no one lower than a commissioner." And I said, "Ma'am, today, I don't think there is anyone lower than..." But she made me humble, and that, I do think that that's, that's an important part, and I appreciate the fact that some comments have been made about, about serving constituents. I was, you know, when I was in the legislature, I was blessed to have a great staff, including Barbara Gilkes back there. And we, it was first and foremost, was taking care of people. You know, anybody could look back at my years that I served in the House Representatives, and those six terms, I represented a Republican district the whole time. And so I knew I had to be a good advocate for my district. And that's the key to success for, I believe, all elected officials, is being responsive to people, and, you know, returning their phone calls, and letting people know that you care about them. I want to, I want to thank all of you, Mr. President, and every member of council for your, your service to our city. I'm grateful to all of you who voted for the ethics proposals tonight. I know that in lots of ways, these measures are educational, and in some ways symbolic, but they do send an important message to our citizens about public ethics and the fact that it's important to us as a city council. I'd like to take a few minutes to reflect on a few things that, as I depart this evening, that I consider to be my failures. I probably should talk about the high points, but a few of my failures. One of my disappointments is my failure to convince others that the people of Newark deserve the opportunity to vote on whether or not our city should be a nonpartisan city. I have advocated for this before two charter commissions without success. Before too long, you folks will consider establishing a new charter commission, and my hope is that you will appoint folks who are open to letting the people decide whether we should have nonpartisan elections in Newark, Ohio. Well over half of Ohio's charter cities have gone to nonpartisan elections, and I will always feel that the people of Newark should at least have the opportunity to decide whether it's a good option for Newark. I just believe that they will make a sound judgment on that issue. Similarly, I'm disappointed that I've not had success in the area of trash hauling. I will always believe that we can create a plan which would keep trash pickup in the private sector, would respect the economic needs of our trash haulers in our city, but at the same time, reduce the number of heavy trucks on our residential streets. And more importantly, greatly reduce the cost of trash service to our residents, as many other communities in Lakin County have done. Many folks come before council advocating for neighborhoods, property maintenance, transportation, job creation. In some ways, you folks, and several of you here tonight, you are, I consider you to be the conscience of the city. And I respect you, and I believe everybody on this council respects you. And I'm going to miss hearing your concerns brought forward. Many of them, especially in the last few years, especially in the area of transportation, we just haven't had the resources to do some of the things that, you know, I wish we could have done, and I think others wish we could have done, too. I'm going to spare you a long rant on my, my concerns about cuts from state government, other than to say that the state of Ohio has, in my opinion, done a great disservice to cities like Newark by taking funds that Newark taxpayers send to Columbus away from us. It causes our citizens to suffer. I can remember going clear back when Dick Baker was mayor, when Bill Moore was mayor, when Mary Lusk was mayor, talking about these kinds of issues, and how important it was to have county and state assistance for the city, to help the city, because we often just need, you know, a hand up from state government, and from county government, to assist us as we try to advance the best interests of our citizens. I'm sure that during my tenure, some of you and me as being in the tank, so to speak, for our employees. In all my years in public service, I have believed that you could maintain balance between resources and salaries of public employees. It's up to negotiators, mediators, and arbitrators to keep that balance, to maintain that balance, and then council's got to make a judgment. Prior to Ohio's 1983 collective bargaining law, there was no balance. There was no balance. I mean, Mr. Morris may recall that, as a member of city council back in those days. It was known as collective begging. Today, we have a fair process in place, and I'm very proud of it. As you folks, one issue that I wanted to bring up, I know there's going to be some discussion next year about revenue and a tax levy. And I really encourage you, as part of that discussion, to consider splitting any revenue from a tax proposal equally between our streets and our safety. Our manpower in both police and fire is willfully inadequate. I feel it would be short-sighted not to use at least half of any revenue generated to protect our citizens. Please consider this, because the likelihood of our citizens... Please consider this, because the likelihood of our citizens supporting an additional tax of any sort will hinge to a great degree on whether we are keeping them safe in their neighborhoods. Finally, I want to wish all of you a wonderful holiday, to Mayor Hall, and to your cabinet. Godspeed to you. I wish you much success, Mayor. Mr. Sassen, I hope that Clemson delivers you a national championship. Anyone but the SEC, please. Oliver Johnson, best wishes on your continued good works. I was proud to support your race. I've been proud to be part of recognizing you for several years, tonight being the 24th time for you being recognized for your good work as our city auditor. And I want to thank our city employees. You know, people who are working right now to keep us safe, we're snowing out, they'd be working to keep our streets clean, and probably sort of wishing it was, they'd get a little bit overtime. But, you know, they, they do good work for our community. And as I've heard the mayor say, you know, "We're running on a thin budget." And so, I want to thank the city employees, and I wanted, one other thing I wanted to say, and I know Mr. Michael Precious is the only union president that's here tonight. I've always thought that being a union president has got to be the lousiest job on the face of the earth. I mean, here you are, you're working for your employer, and you're fighting for your fellow workers. So, I mean, there can't be a hell of a lot of union presidents that get a lot of promotions, if you really think about it. Probably anywhere in, if they're doing their job the way they should, of course. So, as I say goodnight, I asked you to keep Caris in your prayers. She's, she along with a lot of other children, spending the night, the children's tonight, so pray for her, and pray for all her little friends, and all the children everywhere that are suffering from disease and neglect. Thank you. God bless you. And that's what you...
Right. I've just got a few odds and ends. Mr. Cott, I'm a little disappointed that you didn't give Mr. Guthrie the framed picture of the two of you, looking at this couple outside the coffee shop.
I had one of those, I couldn't get them. I just got a little disappointed in that.
They look like a couple beach wheels.
Okay, I'll go with that, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. Guthrie, I'd certainly like to add, I wish you and your family well in your retirement. So, thank you. Thank you for your service. Thanks to all of you for your attendance and your attention this evening. I know it was a long meeting, but we appreciate it. Merry Christmas to all of you, and happy holidays. Unless there's an emergency, we will see you next year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, there's none.
Bush, my Mr. Cott, second my Mr. Raff Hall, favor seen by saying aye.
Aye.
Both things aye. We're adjourned.